... meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Discussion and possible vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of September 5th, 2017, to be accepted and approved by the Town Council. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the Town Council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Item number two, ordinance seventeen dash zero zero nine. An ordinance to provide veterans-only parking at the town hall and town parks. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero zero nine?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, ordinance seventeen dash zero ten. An ordinance establishing section thirteen dash sixteen within chapter thirteen of article thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled Fire Prevention Miscellaneous Provisions. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero ten? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance seventeen dash zero one one. An ordinance amending chapter thirty-one, article five, section thirty-one dash twenty-four of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled Abandonment of Highways, Driftways, Procedure. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero one one? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance seventeen dash zero one two Z. An ordinance of the Town of North Providence amending the existing community comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero one two Z?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number six, ordinance seventeen dash zero one three Z. An ordinance of the Town of North Providence amending the existing zoning ordinance and zoning map. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen dash zero one three Z?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven, Terrance Street abandonment petition. The second hearing of the Town Council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Terrance Street submitted by Douglas Avenue Associates Incorporated and U.S. Development Two, LLC. The petition was advertised on August eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, 2017 for hearing. Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Good evening, I'm Tennesse Azar, I'm the attorney on behalf of the applicant.
I'm sorry.
Tennesse Azar, attorney for the applicant or petitioner.
Okay. Okay, we heard all the testimony last month, is there any questions? Any new questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, do I have a motion to continues for the final hearing next month?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Item number eight, Plimpton Street abandonment petition. The second hearing of the Town Council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Plimpton Street submitted by the Town of North Providence. The petition was advertised on August eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and September first, 2017 for hearing. Again, we've heard the testimony last month. Is there anyone here on the Plimpton Street abandonment? Okay, do I have a motion to advertise? To continue for the next month? For a decision?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine, entertainment license. Town Council to consider the approval of an entertainment license for Tumble Salts Cafe, LLC, DBA Tumble Salts Cafe at One Morgan Avenue, North Providence. Just please state your name for the record, sir.
Yes, Bradford Orbin.
Okay, thank you. You all have the application in front of you, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Orbin? Okay, there be none, do I have a motion to grant the entertainment license?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number ten, private detective license. Town Council to consider the approval of a renewal of a private detective license from James Barberi, eighteen forty-five street, suite number two, North Providence. Just please state your name for the record?
James Barberi.
Okay, you all have the application in front of you, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barberi? Okay, there be none, do I have a motion to approve the renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number eleven, firearms license. Town Council to consider approval of a firearms license, catalog sales only, for Scott Lane, DBA The Firing Lane, two thirty-eight Lexington Avenue, North Providence. This item was continued from the September meeting. We contacted Mr. Lane because we heard from our police chief, he was okay with this, so therefore do I have a motion to approve the catalog sales-only license.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady?
Council President, I have a question.
All right, let me just get the second.
Is there a second? Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Councilman.
Well, a couple of questions I have is, if there is no inventor coming to him, how does he make a profit, or how does he do the catalog? Would you do this? Someone has to be the middleman. He's getting paid, does he get, is the gun coming to him and going to the owner? Where is it going?
I believe last month he said it ships direct. He's the middleman, it ships direct from the distributor.
To ship direct? Does it go paperwise, go to him? The regio, if yours selling it to me, but it goes through Ken to me? Is he taking ownership of that gun in any way, shape, or form before it comes to the end user? That's my question. That's my question. Is someone taking?
He said that, he said that you placed an order with him, he gave it to the company, the company shipped it to you, and then he got paid by the company. Or you paid him? That's what he said last, last week.
Well, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a lot, but he's not here, so.
That was.
I told him he didn't have to, because the police chief, and he had a meeting, and he said he was all, the police chief said he was all set.
Okay. I'm gonna, if you can read your own motion, because I'm gonna say no.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the motion passes on a six to one vote. Item number twelve, block potty. Town Council to consider the approval and permission for William Francis and residents of Leah Street to have a neighborhood block potty and block off the street on October twenty-eighth, 2017, from twelve PM to nine PM. Is Mr. Francis here?
He was supposed to get signatures and come back.
They're in there, the signatures.
I'm sorry?
Signatures are in there.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, he was supposed to get the fire and police signatures.
Wow.
Did he ever do that? Did he do that? He was supposed to come back with it.
Yeah, make a motion, move me down.
Okay, without him here, I'm gonna move on from that agenda item. Okay, number thirteen, possible amendment to tax stabilization agreement of Lyman Loss Developers LLC. Receive request from Robert Torino, co-president of Lyman Loss LLC, request discussion of an amendment to ordinance fifteen dash zero one one, to extend the construction period tax rate from two to three years. Just please state your name for the record, sir.
Robert Torino. Bob.
Okay.
The reason why I requested it is, we were given two years for construction, and we're gonna go over construction because of numerous reasons, one of which is the state directed water on our property, and a lot of water, and it took away the base of one of our buildings, and the building sunk. We had to lift the building up and fix the bricks. We had to build up the floor to a cost of one point four million dollars. It's, I'm dealing with the state now, and of course, when you deal with the state and issues like this, I may be dead before this, excuse me, before this is settled. So, as, because of the delay, we're not only gonna be fined ninety thousand dollars in January first, but every delay, we're fined even more. So I'm looking for relief. The tax agreement only goes up a little bit next year, that's not the, that's not the five thousand dollar increase, it's really on the other years. These mills take two years at least to fill up, and they, we will lose three to four hundred thousand dollars a year until that time. We have to pay the mortgage, all the, it's a difficult situation, and I'm asking for relief. It's not, anything the town has done has been great to us, and I'm just asking for relief. It's really boss for the later years, but, I don't know, any questions? I'll be happy to show you what happened, it's very obvious.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Torino? Any questions? How about Tom Kean at Tax Assessor's here? I don't mean to put you on the spot, Tom, but what I plan on doing is putting this in the front of the Finance Committee and the Ordinance Committee simultaneously, because the stabilization plan is an ordinance.
Yeah.
So we would have to go in and change that ordinance and re-vote on it.
Okay.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to send this to Finance and Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Item number fourteen, Kids Club Ordinance. Receive communications from school committee and school finance director to amend ordinance zero nine dash zero one four concerning kids' club before and after-school programs. Does anyone hear from the school department? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to send this to the Ordinance Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number fifteen, Graded Mix. Discussion and possible vote on the possibility of having an extended hours license for Graded Mix, twelve seventy Middlespring Avenue. Just please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Louis Rivera.
Juliet Arias.
You can lower that.
Juliet Arias.
Thank you.
Michael Esposito.
Okay, thank you for coming before us. Does anybody have any questions about the extended hours at Graded Mix? Obviously, it's a town ordinance that was put in place, you all have that in front of you.
Yes.
Councilman?
I'd like to make a motion to send it to the Ordinance Committee.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion's been made, we'd have to put this in the Ordinance Committee, because obviously, it's a town ordinance, you know, stating the hours we have now, so we'll notify you when that hearing is, to look into this. So a motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions?
I have one other motion I'd like to make after we vote on this motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Councilwoman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we send a communication to Chief, to Quine, to ask for his input on the extended hours.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady to send a letter to the police chief, asking for input. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions on the letter? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Would you guys like to explain what, a little bit, what you're trying to do? Just so.
Our businesses, our food business comes in late, between eleven and twelve is when it's really peaking, and we're finding that the customers are leaving and heading down city by midnight, so, you know, without us being able to stay open that extra hour or so, they like to go down and, and they settle in where they're, where they're going next. I feel that if, if we were able to stay open that extra hour, we'd be able to hold the traffic and keep the customers with us.
So it's more to just staying with our customers and keeping them, than from them, you know, like a half an hour, then kind of they feel like they're enforcing, you know, and we have this quite a good business that way.
Councilman?
Are you currently closing at one?
Yes.
Currently closing at one.
Yes. We're finding the traffic leaving around midnight, though. It's.
Anybody have any other questions? All right, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, High Service Avenue. Council President Odiello requests discussion and possible vote for no parking signs to be placed on High Service Avenue on pole number twenty-three, and twenty-four for no parking from six AM to six PM on weekdays.
So moved.
I put this item on the agenda because I was contacted by one of the supervisors at Ripter, and what happens is the Ripter buses pull into Fatimer parking lot, and as they come out onto High Service, when there's cars parked in front of pole twenty-three and twenty-four, the buses cannot make that turn, they then have to back up into oncoming traffic. And I actually, when I was driving to work, because I live off High Service Ave, I was driving to work the other day, I saw that, it just happened to be that, it was happening at the time I was driving by, and it is a very big safety hazard. So I'm gonna make a motion to send this item to the, to the Ordinance Committee to draft up no parking. As long as, is there any residents here to speak against having these no parking signs up? Just out of curiosity. Okay. I'd like to entertain that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seventeen, no parking at Nine Spicer Street. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on request by residents for no parking signs at Nine Spicer Street. Councilman?
Mr. President, I was, I was approached by the owner of Nine, uh, Nine Spicer Street, who requested the no parking signs to be placed in front of his house, for multiple reasons, one being so he can exit his property, when the street's pretty narrow, so when he's backing out of his property, and someone's parked directly in front of his property, it's him, it's tough to make a left or a right turn to back out. So not to cause any problems with anyone else who's parking on the street, he's just requesting that we place up a no parking sign for the length of his property on Spicer Street.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I got, that's gonna set a precedent. Everybody in his brother's gonna want no parking in front of their house numbers.
Mr. Marcello is present and willing to explain his reasoning why he's looking for that.
Yeah, yeah, come on. Just state your name for the record.
Ronald Marcello, Nine Spicer Street. Yeah, I'm having trouble backing out of my driveway due to two cars parked on the other side, and sometime, a car parks right up on my side of the street, right up, and I can't make the turn, and this, this has been happening. And then another thing, when the recycling guy came, my bucket was right out there, but the car was parked right in front of it. So I am having a problem there, and I asked the councilman if he can help me.
Is it the same, Ron, is it the same car all the time?
Please? It's not all the time, but.
No, I'm saying, is it the same car?
Uh, no, sometimes it's different cars, but.
Okay.
It's the reason I can't back out.
Yeah.
Because of it, and I asked the councilman to see what he can do for me.
Understood, I think we'll take care of it. Thank you very much. You wanna send it to ordinance, just to get it drafted up?
Yeah, so I make a motion to send this to the Ordinance Committee to draft an ordinance, to draft an ordinance for a no parking sign at Nine Spicer Street.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eighteen, National Grid Properties. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote on an update concerning communications sent to National Grid regarding properties they own in North Providence. Councilman?
Mr. President, I know that we've sent multiple letters to National Grid, I know that, I understood from the clerk that they responded, I know Councilman Amorigi has had an issue that, you know, took him a couple of months to get National Grid to clean up their property and stop somebody from parking on it. It seems to me that, for the last three years, that we've been requesting, you know, you know, at least that I can remember, from National Grid concerning Obed Avenue, the backside of Dodge Street, it seems to me that we constantly have to contact them to maintain their own property. And last month, we not only sent them a letter to answer for certain stuff, we also requested that they be present at this meeting. So what I'd like to do, because I don't see them here, unless somebody is here from National Grid, what I'd like to do, and I hate to do another letter, but, because it just, now this is like the fourth letter, what I'd like to do is I'd like to request a letter to National Grid, asking them to send us a maintenance agreement for the properties they have. And what I mean by maintenance agreement, who's maintaining the property for them, when do they get maintained? Because I am, I could tell you probably this summer, I looked back in my notes, I've contacted the administration, because I know they, they have a good relationship with the Communications Director for National Grid, I know on behalf of me, they've contacted her at least ten times this summer to do things on their property. So what I would like them to do is to send us a maintenance schedule, here's who we hire to maintain our property, here's who you can contact, and the other thing is, I'd like them to kind of give us an idea as to why most of their property is open, whereas we have residents who, you know, have businesses, like Councilman Amorigi faced, where you have a business owner parking on the land, up on Obed Avenue, we had an individual who decided to throw a potty on the land consistently, he also parked on it, the backside of Dodge Street, somebody, you know, started dumping, a landscaper started dumping their unwanted stuff on that land. So, one, I'd like a maintenance agreement from them, and I hate to call it an agreement, but I'd like something from them that tells us how they're maintaining their property and who we can contact other than them when we have an issue, and two, what they're doing to stop people from using their property, I hate to use the word illegally, but without their permission and/or causing residents who live next to that property a heartache.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis to send a letter to National Grid with a maintenance agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amorigi. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Can I just make a statement?
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilman DeStefanis for continuing to keep the ball rolling on this, I think this is, I've only been here on the council for nine months now, but it's been a real, probably the most time-consuming issue that I've had, and obviously, a lot of you have been on the council a lot longer, been dealing with the same issues. I just want to state for the record, National Grid, and it says, states so in their letter, they did go out to Charlotte and Herd Street, they put up some stakes, put up a little bit of signage with regards to parking and trespassing, however, there's a portion of an easement they have off of Charlotte Street, I believe Mr. Rossi was here and Mr. Pollak were here last month to speak on it, and not only has that not been addressed, although there is a no trespassing sign, every day, more and more trash is piling up in there. Just recently, today, I saw a toilet, a used toilet, sitting on top of a stack of what appear to be pallets, I've witnessed rats there myself on numerous occasions, so although they are, at least on the face of it, addressing it, I do think we need to take this the next step.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President, can I add to that?
Sure.
The biggest reason why I wanted them to come tonight is I wanted to know what they're doing with the property. You know, what's the reason for them owning it? I understand years ago, you know, you used to have the lines that run through there, but as technology changed, you know, I understand they're a large company, and who wants to give up property, but if you're not using it, or you have no need for it, is there a way that we could sit down and start negotiating buying this property back? So.
That's a good point. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Do you wanna speak? All right. Just state your name for the record.
John Pollak.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what could possibly be done about the house that's behind my neighbor, Mr. Ritchie, with all the garbage in the back that's on National Grid property, that has the toilet sitting on it. This was brought up last month, and I'm not sure if anything was said to him, and nothing's been done over there.
So you're saying it's the house, is the house on the property?
Yeah, his yard is what, the yard's measured, but his, all the garbage is on National Grid property from what I'm told, and I took a picture today and sent to the, to Councilman Amorigi, and it's, nothing's been done at all.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may, basically what it is, is, and it's a beautifully kept, kept yard, Mr. Ritchie has, it's almost like an Italian villa, he has a garden, he has a veranda, and directly abutting, his property in the back is a multifamily, I believe it's a two or three family house, but right in between, it's literally no bigger than the stage, there's an easement that National Grid owns, and that's where all this trash is going. I know personally, and I'm sure Raymond and Councilman Brady have made calls too, to code enforcement, and as far as I'm, you know, to my knowledge, nothing has been done, and I think that's the relief, you know, Mr. Pollak's looking for.
He still has his boats sitting on the property as well.
Why don't we put something in writing? So I don't know if, when you guys wanna make a motion, send a letter to the administration and the director of DPW, and put this on the record, and try, try that round.
So what is the address?
Mr. Ritchie's address is.
Mr. Ritchie or the house behind him.
It's in between the two.
Yeah.
In between, do you know?
We'll look it up.
I think it's eleven, but I'm not sure the name of the street. I believe it's eleven, it's a tenement house, it's the only house right there.
Okay, so does, does anyone wanna make a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilman DeStefanis, are we, are we gonna send this to the administration and DPW Director?
Correct.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number nineteen, four-way stop sign. Councilman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote on a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Gillan Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Adam Street. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the intersection of Gillan Ave, obviously as you stated, Lincoln Ave and Adam Street, it's kind of a unique configuration. Unfortunately, I don't have a map, I'm sure you guys could look it up on your iPads, but Adam Street itself is about twice as wide as Lincoln Street, but they essentially feed into each other, and Gillan Ave, which is basically a main thoroughfare, cut through, cuts through the middle of it. So actually, even going back to when I was campaigning, people come flying through that intersection from all directions. And due to the configuration of the streets, you have people riding up on the sides of curbs, on people's lawns, and basically creating a dangerous situation in general. There's a lot of children that live in Gillan Platte, there's a lot of senior citizens that live there as well. And it's actually kind of baffling that there's not any stop sign in any direction, never mind a four-way stop sign. So we received a petition, I think it was actually brought to the administration originally. I'm not sure if it was in the packet or not, but it's signed by at least a dozen of the local residents. And I just wanted to put that on the record and hopefully get moving on getting that at least, at least into the ordinance committee to address this.
Okay, do you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to send to the ordinance committee to request to draft an ordinance authorizing the four-way stop sign at the intersections of Gillan Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Adam Street.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amareji. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty, repairs to Gillan Avenue. Councilman Amareji requests discussion and possible vote concerning repairs on Gillan Avenue. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was part and parcel of the same petition, although something else that I personally noticed, and I know others on the stage have noticed, so Gillan Ave is very well-traveled. And what has happened over a period of time is that the stone curbing on both sides of the road, but particularly the side closer to Lincoln, has completely eroded. So what you have is a couple situations that have arisen from that. One, there's a lot of water runoff coming down Gillan Ave onto people's properties, into their driveways, onto their lawn, soaking their lawns, and starting to actually erode their property line. The second issue you have is people seem to cut through from Lincoln into North Providence up to Patucket that way, and what you also have is people actually riding over lawns because they're cutting, you know, they're cutting very close to the curbs, especially with the lack of stop signs in some areas on Gillan Ave. So I'm not sure if this is an ordinance issue, but I wanted to at least have a discussion about potentially even sending a letter to the administration and/or the DPW about either maintaining or rebuilding or reinstalling some of the curbs on Gillan Ave.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Councilman Amareji to send a letter to the administration and DPW regarding Gillan Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiStefanos. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-one, Resolution seventeen dash zero zero three. Discussion and vote on Resolution seventeen dash zero zero three of the town of North Providence to request the General Assembly take the necessary steps to amend Article twenty, Chapter one, Section twenty dash one, dash two, and twenty dash one, dash three, as well as Chapter two, Section twenty, dash two, dash one of the North Providence Town Charter concerning the North Providence Purchasing Board. We have a motion to adopt Resolution seventeen dash zero zero three and send it down to the General Assembly. Motion's been made by Councilman Giusti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions?
Mr. President, does this change the time of the meetings? Or just the makeup of the board?
Neither, Councilman. It changes the, well, it changes the posting of the meetings to the town website versus the newspaper. It increases the small purchase amount, which used to be fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. And then the purchasing agent had an issue with regards to being able to extend the date of the bid submission due to certain situations. The ones that we've allowed for at this point are weather-related. What I did was I looked at the state purchasing guidelines and talked to people at state purchasing. So what this would do if adopted by the General Assembly would allow an extension of time for bad weather when the town hall is closed due to weather. And it would also provide for, sometimes I guess on some of these sewer projects, the good town was doing, first estate said that the engineer would help put out the bid specs, but then in the middle of the time period to submit the bid, what would happen is the engineer would come back with like a change order or an amendment to what needed to be done. And then the purchasing agent didn't have any ability to extend. So I contacted the state, and the state, when they have a change in the bid spec, they extend it. But we didn't, I didn't want to extend it too long because then somebody might interpret the first estate and kind of like move the date around arbitrarily. So this one would extend it fourteen days from the date the bid was submitted, for the, like, including what the situation, or if there was a change on behalf of the town changing it. Those are the three changes.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, liquor license, entertainment license renewals. Discussion and vote to authorize the town clerk to advertise the liquor and entertainment license renewals for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen to be heard on November seventh, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty PM. We have a motion to advertise. A motion been made by Councilman DiStefanos, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, claims submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to claims received from the following. Lawrence Stevenson, eighteen twenty-six Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Mary Arcillo, thirty Hagen Street, apartment two eighteen, Providence, Rhode Island. Richard and Ann Bowman, thirty-seven Sherwood Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Elizabeth Iafredi by attorney Gregory Ficchirelli, one twenty-one Phoenix Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. We have a motion to submit these to the Claims Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Giusti, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-four, Claims Committee Report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the Claims Committee Report and approval, denial, or referral of claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Faola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Claims Committee met earlier this evening, resolved claims as follows. Lawrence Stevenson approved for property damage, one thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Ms. Mary Arcillo approved, this was bodily injury, one thousand eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Ms. Elizabeth Iafredi seeking damages against the town for various equitable and monetary relief forward to town carrier. Mr. McBride approved, four hundred forty-five dollars for property damage. And Mr. and Mrs. Bowman continued, pending additional information.
Make a motion to accept the, quite hardly, Claims Committee report.
Motion's been made by Councilman Giusti to accept the Claims Committee report. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? Do you have a question? Just come on.
My name is Mary Arcillo, and the reason I'm here is because I fell in the North Providence Library. I fell under a loose wire, and I ended up with a fractured bone in my hand, and I had severe nerve damage in both arms, and I was operated on. And I don't feel my medical bills will warrant my pain and suffering that I've taken. I'm gonna be discharged from my surgeon next month. And I feel I should be awarded more for my injuries, because I've gone through a six-inch incision on my elbow, I had my nerve cut, and in two months, I gotta go back and have the same thing done on my left hand. So...
If I may?
Not only that, one more thing is a fact. When I fell, I was picked up by a male librarian and a patron, not two patrons, on my incident report.
Okay.
And I was never asked for a rescue. And the incident report was never signed by the woman librarian who wrote it up also.
Okay.
And I have the originals.
All right, the incident report I have is signed. The amount that's here is reimbursement for out-of-pocket co-payments. Some of the bills that I had received were for dates of service prior to your loss, so those were excluded. I don't know what they were for. But regarding pain and suffering, I would advise you to seek legal counsel.
Okay, I will.
The Claims Committee of the town, because this is where it gets...
Well, see, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that I had to file a claim, and I, I didn't, I didn't know what to do, because I've never had this happen to me before.
If you call our town clerk's office tomorrow, this is Mary Ann, she's our town clerk. She'll help you.
No, she, she's due this reimbursement, this is for co-payments that...
But if you wanna file a claim for bodily injury...
I wanna file a claim for my pain and suffering.
That's something that would go through the town's legal department.
Yeah, as I said, I was in a cast, I had a fractured bone in my hand, and my right hand has severe damage.
Yeah, you have to get an attorney that...
I will have to have an attorney?
Yes, and he would file a claim, and that would go possibly to the town's insurance.
I go see you tomorrow, Monday, this coming Monday?
To file another claim, you need to hire an attorney, or he could file for me.
Oh, I need to have an attorney do this?
Other than this amount that's given to her, that's...
Correct, because you're claiming pain and suffering.
Yes, plus for my injury, I mean, I have a six-inch scar, and they cut my nerve, and they're gonna do the same in a couple of months to the other arm because of it. And I have my hand in a fractured bone.
Just so we can help you, the Claims Committee that we deal with, the Town Claim Committee, is a very small committee, a small Claims Committee that deals mostly with pothole damage to cause, property damage within the town, if your lawn got run over by, so when it's something, a bodily injury on town property, you'd have to have an attorney file that.
I do, okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Yes.
So now I know I'll hire one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your help.
No problem.
Thank you, all of you. Okay, thank you.
Item number twenty-five, Finance Committee Report. Town council discussion and action with regard to the Finance Committee Report presented by Councilman DiStefanos. Councilman?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on October second last evening. There were two items on the agenda. The first was a discussion vote on tax abatements over a thousand dollars. Mr. Kane, our tax assessor, is present. If anyone has any questions, the minutes to the meeting is coming around to your review. The first item on the, was to abate two hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-one cents due to a software error, software discrepancy in how Vision software communicated the tax rule for the tax assessor's office. So it's basically just a correction. Am I correct to say that, Tom? If you could come up, that would be great. Did you hear me? Did you hear me? Why would I do? That was present. Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta add to that anyway.
Tom Kane, tax assessor. To follow up on what Councilman DiStefanos was elaborating on, after we had gone through the tax levy process of setting our tax rates and the budget was finalized, we did a final ownership update in our tax administration, administration software to ensure that the bills were gonna go to the correct addresses. When we did that process, Vision's tax administration software, when it imported the data from our other program that we use that tracks all the values, for some reason, it overridden the values that we had in the system. And when it did that, it increased the value on our eight percent properties. We had five of them listed on that report. This was money that was never budgeted for, it was never included in any of our tax levy calculations. So therefore, this abatement has no effect on the collection rate or on the, you know, the budget or the tax rate or anything like that. This is simply just to correct the computer error.
Councilman?
Tom, is this done now? Is this, is this done with all the payments as far as software, is this all done now?
It is, it is in this instance. We really don't have a lot of properties in town that we lock and that we, you know, we come up with like an override value for. We have those five properties listed there, we have Fatima Hospital, and then we have Limansville Loft. Those are the only ones that are ever on an override value. The rest of them are synced with our appraisal software. So I've taken steps with Vision to make sure that their ownership update does not update the value, so moving forward, we're not gonna have an issue like this.
Okay, so no, we're not gonna have a problem. This is it?
I'm not gonna guarantee that, but, you know, to the best of my ability, that's, you know, we're gonna ensure that we, you know, we try not to have these, these types of mistakes.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The next item that was on the agenda was a tax abatement in the amount of sixteen hundred twenty dollars and sixty-one cents for Ritchie Law Associates for the overvaluation of tangibles, to which Tom hired Northeast to go in and do an evaluation. So that's a recommendation, both are recommendations. I do wanna make one thing for the record. On the minutes, Council President Dean Odiello was present, and so wasn't Julie Zanni from the Police Department. The second, second item on the agenda was the discussion on equitable sharing in forfeiture funds. Chief DeCoyen came in, gave us a breakdown as to what's remaining in the, you know, in the Google funds right now. It's about just over thirty million available. He also brought in Dan DeQuatro, who gave us a breakdown and kind of a status as to where we stand with public safety complex. And the committee chose to continue that, and we're gonna have him back in November because he had to leave early due to the fire that happened last night on Douglas Avenue. So I ask that the council accept the minutes as is.
Motion's been made by Councilman DiStefanos, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Tax addendums, Town Council discussion and action. Possible vote for the approval of a list of tax addendums received from tax assessor in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty cents for motor vehicles. We have a motion to grant?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiStefanos. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, tax abatements under a thousand. Town council discussion and action, possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from the tax assessor in the amount of three thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for real estate, eight thousand two dollars and fifty-four cents for motor vehicle, and three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-five cents for tangibles. Do we have a motion to abate?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiStefanos. Any questions? Councilman DiLorenzo?
This three thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents, is that one thing, or is it a bunch of items that equal that?
It's gotta be a bunch of items.
It's multiple.
So it's three, at least three or four items that equal that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn.[1782.21]